Climb in, but you must set the board before you dive in. That's free game valuable as EA on the PS. And yes, we in the game. Thank you. PS. All our family started in the PJs. The question is what the generation after see next? The lesson is roll the dice and level up. Why repeat the cycle? Rather here, I'm better than you than I'm just like you. Once they say you better than who then who don't like you? Guess that's just the selfish in you. This ain't a rival. Pray these words are blessing to you. This ain't the Bible, but all these verses written in red is for survival. You hear all these visions I shared is to remind you to do what you designed to. No way they can't deny you set the board.
Back here live, y'all.
Back again.
The nittiest of the grittiest. It's time to get to Lydia's yard. We on episode. What's this 10 11?
This is episode 11, man.
Damn.
Episode double one.
Double one. This is your boy local himself. I'm here with the one and only DJ.
DJ Kane. What's happening? Wichita Falls stand up? Not really?
Nah nah. St. Petersburg, Florida. Stand up one time. We taking over Texas, y'all.
Let's do it.
Kane, how you feeling today, man?
Uh, today's been a good day, man. It's been a very, uh, very busy day, man. We been up. Um, lots going on, man. So y'all just stay tuned.
Man.
Yeah. How about you, man?
Man, it's been a week, boy. It's really been a week, but we here though.
We here.
That's all that matters. We got big things coming for y'all. Stay tuned. So you ready? You got your boxing gloves on?
I got my boxing gloves on.
I got my boxing gloves on too.
It's about to be some shit.
I hope you're already in the audience. I hope y'all got your popcorn. Got your little drank it drank going on. We got the referee, Mr. John, the producer in the background to make sure that this fight goes according to plan.
Yes, sir.
Make sure this is a fair fights. And most importantly, we making sure we say what's real.
Nitty gritty, always in a hundred.
Episode 11 and this what we finna do, y'all?
Yeah. One nation under God and the nitty gritty is with nitty gritty and justice for all.
Can we get down on the shirt? Let's put down on the shirt. So today, today, nitty gritty is taken on the board of education, y'all.
Hmm.
We, we all, y'all, your school, your alumni, my alumni.
Yeah.
I don't know about yours, cuz.
Mine, Bulldogs, you know, high school and college, the. We didn't, bro, they called us the mean green. It's, it's a bird. It wasn't the UNT Eagles. It's UNT mean green, but that's a whole nother.
But me and Joe Green though, like come on now.
Yeah, but.
Come on, give that man his props, bro.
I gave him his props, but it's a bird. Why not the mean green eagles? It's the UNT mean green.
Exactly.
What the fuck is a mean green?
Mean Joe Green, the person that put y'all on the map.
But they should put him as the mascot, not a damn bird.
Bro, come on now. Come on. We not finna argue mascots right now.
Hey, UNT, I still fuck with y'all, man. You know what I'm saying? Appreciate. For them crazy ass years.
DJ Kane, everybody.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's also gonna be in a T-shirt. DJ Kane, everybody.
Yes, sir.
So look at here. Schools have changed over time. We've all had our different experiences in school. We've all created our different moments in school.
Yeah.
And a lot of shit has happened in school, you know?
Yeah, a lot has definitely changed over time. Um, I mean, things advance, you know what I mean? But I feel like it's, it's a lot of things that have advanced, you know, as far as technology and all that. But as far as like the curriculum, I feel like it's actually gotten, I mean, it's more exposure, but I think it's gotten worse. You know what I mean? What do you think? Is it gotten better or worse?
I think so cuz, uh, it's, it's crazy when you think about it like this, okay? So back in the day, you needed school.
Yeah.
Like back in the day, like you wasn't, unless you were doing a trade, you needed school. Like unless you're trying to be like a plumber or an electrician or something, you know what I mean? You needed it. You weren't gonna get a job unless you got that degree.
Yeah.
And nowadays, it's just like, I mean, let's just be real. Two thirds, in my opinion, two thirds of these degrees that you're gonna get in school.
Yeah.
You don't need.
Yeah. Um, you know what? Unless you're doing STEM, trying to be a doctor, which is also, you know, STEM.
Engineer.
Engineer, lawyer, or maybe business administration. I'm, I'mma be honest, a degree really isn't needed, man.
No, it's not. So let's, let's, let's look at how things were back then to now. Like, let me ask you this.
Yeah.
When you, how, how was your school like overall? Like, how was your, how was your memory from elementary school to high school?
My school, elementary, uh, elementary is very diverse. Uh, went to school next to a big military base. So it was like a lot of military kids from like Korea, all that. So very diverse, but as far as like the curriculum, it was like, you know, they, they, they told us you're gonna be writing in cursive. So they started pushing that on us. It was, it was kinda strict. It was kinda strict. We didn't have no dress code, but it was, it was pretty strict.
Actually, so it's kinda funny when you talk about dress code.
Yeah.
Because I look at like the schools that I went to, right?
Uh huh.
You know, I moved around a lot and went to a lot of different schools. So I kinda had like a lot of different experiences in high school.
Yeah.
And I remember one high school, like I hated that damn school. Like, I'm not gonna lie like that. I had, I had moments where I would go to school. I'm like, I just, I'm like, I'm hoping that somebody just bump into me the wrong way. Like, I'm just hoping I get a chance to like fly their head. Like, this is just one particular school. I'm not gonna say the name of the school.
Yeah, we gonna.
We gonna, we ain't, we ain't gonna be that nitty gritty nevermind, but I hated it.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
And so one thing I hate is like people put too much of an emphasis on your fashion.
You in school to learn. Why you got the latest Jordans out?
I mean, it's cool if you have it, but who gives a shit?
Yeah, who gives a shit?
You know, cuz like, so like me personally, I didn't, you know, and I'm, dad, you know, I love you, but I gotta, I gotta say this.
Love you, pop.
So my father hated that I always wore shorts. Like he'd always be like, son, you sure you don't wanna wear them jeans? What them jeans look real good with that shirt on? But I, I never really felt the need to like really dress up in school, you know?
Yeah.
And I mean, you always get like those kids who just like talk shit about it like, boy, my shirt cost more than your whole outfit.
Oh, my God.
I, I had, I had a messed up response for that, but that's, that's too nitty gritty for the audience. I'll say that response for you.
I know exactly what you're talking about. And you know what's funny? I'm gonna be honest. Where, where, where are those kids doing now? Them kids are always just show up on the fly shit, but never really made straight A's. What, what are they doing now?
If I'mma be real with you.
Yeah.
I have not spoken to a single person from high school since I left Florida.
Totally irrelevant, you know what I mean?
Exactly.
And you know, a lot of my friends that I know of that have, that did that back in the day worried about, oh, I gotta dress nice, dress fly. I mean, I look at them today, people that I know of on Facebook and it's like, y'all stealing Wichita Falls. All that money you put on them clothes, you could have put on for your books in college, but.
I mean, it's not like they put it, they, they, they didn't. It wasn't they money. Like, come on now.
Oh, yeah. Mom and dad's money.
Come on, come on. Daddy's credit card.
Mom and dad, y'all just stop buying these kids all these damn clothes. They don't need this shit.
So like, let, let, let's look at how school was back then cuz first off, I really feel like when you look at how school.
That thing just slid like.
I know.
Boy, it's skating over heads, huh? Shit.
But like, so clearly, you know, Kane, you and I weren't around for the old days of school.
Yeah.
Cuz you and I weren't even thought of.
Yeah.
But you know, you just hear about, let's, let's talk about school like the sixties, seventies, right?
Oh, yeah.
It really seemed like it was just either the motherfuckers wearing the leather jacket, smoking a cigarette in school, the jocks and the smart kids.
Like the grease lightning days. Elvis Presley was hot.
Why couldn't it be grease lightning?
Yeah, grease lighting days. Yeah, those days are kinda interesting, you know? And, um, it was also like a lot of like racial stuff going on, you know? We were just, I mean, look, there's racism today, but back then in the sixties. Man, correct me if I'm wrong and I apologize if I'm getting the dates wrong, but I believe in the early sixties is when they started desegregating schools.
Well, yeah, they started desegregating and trying to desegregate it. Honestly, the only schools that really didn't have a problem with it were the ones who had the black people making their sports look good.
You see?
You know, cuz watch this. Here's a funny, here's a funny situation.
Yeah.
So you, you look at all these major universities, these powerhouse universities, let's, let's just talk about football only, right? So you got these powerhouse universities that, you know, were not allowing black kids in the school back then. And one thing a lot of people don't know when it comes to football, a lot of people don't know is like back in the day, like HBCUs was the schools.
Yeah.
Like when it came to football, HBCUs, yeah, they, they were shitting on these schools. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like FAMU, Bethune-Cookman, uh, Grambling, Prayerview, Howard, Brown, like all of them.
Right.
They were these schools, you know, and then it just changed when they started integrating. Cuz then it's like, alright, well, shoot, we don't like black people, but we do like their stats.
Yeah, you know, they're gonna, you know, they, they wanna find an opportunist, the opportunity to grow their school. So I believe that was probably like a reason that did allow desegregation. But I mean, look, bro, it's just like, it's crazy when you think about it that you couldn't go to a certain school because you're a black person.
Exactly.
It's like so stupid and shouts out to Oliver Brown of the NAACP who pushed for that. Brown versus the Board of Education, you know what I'm saying? And when he got that, I think he's from Topeka, but he pushed that, bro. And when it became like amended in the United States where you have to desegregate schools, boy, it changed a lot.
It did, but it was, it was also a huge adjustment because even though like the states mandated that, it's not like it was immediately accepted.
Oh, hell no. Them kids were still like, nah, of course you know there's gonna be a lot of pushback. There's gonna be like, nah, we're not gonna do it at our schools. Like, nah, you have to. It's law. So like they have to go to your school if they want to.
Cuz I mean, like, let's, let's look at it in today's situation.
Uh huh.
It's kinda different, yet the same with trans people, you know?
Okay.
Like they, a lot of them don't, aren't accepted anywhere. And if you don't accept them, that's you, that's up to you. That's your beliefs. We not gonna speak on that cuz we talking about the board of education, but.
Trans people.
Yeah, like, like, cuz you got, you have kids now who feel like they were born as the wrong sex. And they go to school in the identity that they feel comfortable with.
Okay.
And even though a lot of, you know, the laws are trying to make society accepted.
Right.
Society in the school is not accepting it cuz you got these people who are getting bashed and, you know, disrespected and, you know, bullied and whatnot.
But are they preventing them from going to school? Like they say no trans people allowed.
I, I don't know if it ever got to that point. I don't know if there's any, I, I gotta actually research that. I don't know if there's any schools that are just like, yo, your kid's a boy and he dressed up like a girl. He can't come here.
Yeah, I don't think there's a law that's like that, but they are definitely being mistreated at these campuses on school. Yeah, but they, they could go to whatever school they want. It's just they're, they're not being treated fairly and I think that definitely needs to be adjusted.
Honestly, if I'mma put the nitty gritty stamp on it.
Yeah.
This is what we need sound effects right here. What I'm about to say right now, this is what we need sound effects.
Shout out Mona, we need to record your voice.
Yeah, we need, yeah, Mona, we need to get you back on here. So you ready for this?
Let's do it.
Give me a drum roll.
Alright, what we got?
Dear ninety something percent of y'all parents, your kids are assholes.
Yeah.
I said it. Dear ninety some odd percent of parents, I'm looking at this camera, your kids are assholes.
Y'all bad.
You know, y'all, y'all bad. A lot of these kids are bad and I look at, you know, cuz let's, let's, let's look at how TV portrays high school.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay.
There was a popular Netflix show, Thirteen Reasons Why.
Um, okay. I don't watch Netflix, so you gotta split right down down to me. Y'all know I don't watch TV, so.
I don't watch TV either, but this is DJ.
Or Netflix.
DJ Kane, everybody.
Or Hulu or any.
Ladies, if you're expecting a Netflix and chill with him, just chill.
Yeah, we gonna chill. We gonna do something different, you know what I'm saying? But yeah, the, the people, the kids, bro, they're, they're the worst in grade school. You know that.
Exactly.
Especially high school, boy, they be, they have the best, but they got the best roast.
I mean, it's not even just like the roast. Like you get, you get some kids who like really treat some of these other students like complete shit.
Yeah, man.
And then it's just like, what makes it even worse is like, it, it comes back to the parents, like, yes, little Billy is bullying the fuck out of this kid. And they're like, but little Billy wouldn't do that.
Oh, yeah? Well, little Billy wouldn't do that? Oh, pull up to high school and see little Billy in math class.
Exactly, cuz like, like even nowadays.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna lie. God knew what he was doing when he let me graduate in 2010.
Okay.
Because if I went to school now.
Yeah.
If I went to school now.
Shit.
Do you, man?
You'd be recruited by MMA coaches off the bat. They'd be like, well, we can get this kid, boy, he.
I'd be, I would be flying heads left and right. Like, not saying I'm an advocate for violence in school, but I am an advocate for, let me stop playing.
You might get drafted by the Mayweather team. They might put you on.
Cuz, cuz, cuz look, man, look, when I discovered cyberbullying and shit, like somebody I know, I'm not gonna say no names or give any references. But somebody I know went through that, right?
Yeah.
And they were just like, yo, this is going on. I was like, I'm looking at the message. I was like, yo, tell this person to pull up then.
Yeah.
Like you, you talking all this mess on Instagram like, oh, yeah, I'mma beat your ass when I see you. Where you at then?
It was a real person.
Real, real person.
Oh, come on. Yeah, you gotta pull up.
This is a real situation. And if I told you what city these students were in, like doing all the cyberbullying, like you're gonna laugh.
Okay.
It was Plano.
Okay. I mean, pull up.
Pull up, pull up, Plano. I mean, now, if we, if we, if we talking like South Dallas, somebody from South Dallas messaging you saying they gonna pull up and beat your ass. You might wanna like get the strap, you know what I'm saying?
You might run the damn yellow bees and shit.
Right, right. This happened in St. Pete. Yo, you might just wanna hide, but like, Plano? Like.
Yeah, you might see your favorite rapper pull up on you.
Bro, what, what they gonna do? Slap you with mama credit card? Let me stop playing.
I mean, shit, yeah, pull up then.
Let me stop playing. So, so check.
Yeah, that's crazy. Shouts out Plano, man, but y'all, y'all already know the business.
Y'all already know the, but it is, it's funny because I, I look at how situation were handled back then. You know, you had a problem with somebody that's like, alright, meet me outside of school.
Yeah.
And we gonna settle this.
Three o'clock when that bell ring, meet me at the, what y'all like, uh, flagpole.
Yeah, meet me at the flag.
Meet me at the flagpole. It's going down, you know what I mean?
It is going down, you know what I mean? But.
Do you feel like you had a lot of fights in school? Cuz I know we discussed in other episodes where you, this, this is kinda where the birth of local came. I got in a few fights in school, but it's like I wasn't going ham. I mean, do you feel like you got a lot? Like you just had a lot of situations like that?
I really didn't, I really didn't have a lot. I didn't, I, damn. I really didn't have, I, I could have had situations that could have led to fights.
Yeah.
But my, my parents had rules for me.
Okay.
Alright, I had to follow chain of command.
Yeah.
You know, if somebody's messing with me.
Uh huh.
And then I, you know, if they put their hands on me.
Yeah.
I can defend myself to the point where I can get away.
Got you.
So it would be like, hee hee, huh. Alright, I could walk away instead of like, hee hee, huh.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, I couldn't do all that.
Yeah.
You know, but if it got down to the point where I had to put my hand, like, cuz if I had to think about it, I put my hands on somebody on the bus one time.
Okay.
Like, yeah, I put my hands on somebody on the bus one time. It was like, my parents, my parents gonna laugh when they hear about this.
That's the worst place cuz there's no escape.
No, there is no escape. Like you just, you just, cuz like, I was, I went through, you know, bullying in school because I was quiet.
Yeah.
I mean, I always knew how to fight. I just wouldn't do it. I just didn't see the point of it. Like you're just talking shit. I didn't know how to roast back then. Those y'all who know me now know that I fire your ass up, but like back then.
He's chef in the day.
Like back then, nah, I really didn't.
Got him.
And so this one kid just kept talking shit and it was like going on for a while, you know? My parents knew about it. Principal knew about it. Eight to nothing. And then so, yeah, I just had to put my hands on the kid, you know?
Gotta get, it's gotta, ooh, shit.
And I mean, I'm not gonna lie, like my, you know, my, my parents had that moment like the Alabama mom of like pulling up to the school bus type shit. You know, when they see that nobody else is doing nothing, they like, you know, you see, you see my dad.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you know, so like, I'm not saying that he put his hands on nobody. He, my, my dad did not put hands on those students, but you know, he, he went full on Papa Bear. Let me just put it like that.
Yeah.
You know, now, I think later on, I did have another situation where I just kinda snapped.
Okay.
On a bus cuz, uh, I used to, I went through the privilege of being the only black kid in the neighborhood and the only black kid on the school bus. So that shit was annoying.
Being the only black kid, I feel like that just opens you up to so much, especially in high school. It's like, cuz I used to have braids like you did when I was younger, right? And they would be like, nah, it's not. Posting the pictures up on nitty gritty, we gonna have them up tonight. I'mma put them up on there.
They're not gonna see this episode until, bro, bro.
On the Instagram page, I'mma put the pictures up and they're gonna be with the night for 24 hours. Taking them down. 24 hours only. I'mma put them up. I'm telling you.
I gotta see this. I gotta, if you, if you, if you post that, I will post my high school football picture.
Picture's gonna be up today as soon as I get done this episode for 24 hours. You best see him while you can.
Take my hand while you're at it. Alright, let's go.
I'mma, yeah, watch, watch. But, uh, it's like, when, when you, when you're like the only black kid and it's like mostly white kids. Like when I went to high school, it was all white kids. Uh, uh, elementary school, middle school was diverse cuz my high school's out of different high schools, like down, downtown.
Right.
And on the bus, it's only black kid. You got the cornrows and you got the kids trying to touch your shit. It's like, you know? And then I sometimes make it in a twist and they be like, are you Jamaican? Are you Jamaican? I'm like, oh my fucking God. And I was quiet too. So I was like, man, I was like, oh, man. Ooh, you know, and you know what's, you know, cuz I mean, let's be honest, you a kid, you watching all this Dragon Ball Z. You just wishing you could just like fucking spirit bomb all them kids on the bus.
But you know how many times I commit a man, the whole bust in my head?
I was thinking, I was like, man, like just, just give me some sun right now, spirit bomb the whole now. But man, it, it was tough, man. And this is why, going back to desegregation, and I'mma be perfectly just straight up nitty gritty. This kinda, desegregation, we needed it. It's obvious to desegregate. We know, we need to all come together. But the only bad thing about desegregation is that black kids have started to go to these places like a Plano or Frisco. They weren't being around a lot of their culture, you know what I mean? Especially some schools, like if you make good grades, you going to the best school. So if you the only black kid and whatever, and now you can go to this school, you the only black kid, it's like now you going to school eight hours a day. They're not teaching you about Marvin Garvey. They're not teaching you about, they're teaching you about Christopher Columbus and all these other European people. So it's like you kinda lose some of that time with your culture, you know what I mean?
See, well, here goes a crazy thing. So I went to a historically black high school.
Yeah, I respect, hey, you know what?
He finally gave me a button, y'all.
Nah, I got, that's, that's not just you. That's our people too, bro. I'm an advocate for black education.
So it's kinda funny because being in a historically black high school. They still taught the European, like white people stuff, you know? And so I, I, I think about what you said, right?
Yeah.
And honestly, Kane, I agree and disagree with it.
Okay.
Alright, first off, shout out to Kino Concepts for the water, keeping us hydrated on the nitty gritty podcast. Trust up.
You already know.
So would it be beneficial? In a sense, yes. But would it cause harm? Yes. Because, think about it, you get a lot of, I'm just gonna use white people for an example.
Yeah.
You get a lot of white people who, parents have ways of viewing other races.
Yeah.
And then you put them in an all white school and then what is that gonna do? Make them comfortable in that mindset.
Yeah.
So then you get, you know, cuz like I, it's crazy. I remember Jimmy Butler, uh, saying this one time. Uh, he said he walked past a family and I guess Jimmy Butler was like the first black person this kid has ever seen. And the kid, I, I, you don't know if you heard the story. The kid like said in front of his parents like, is that one of those, is that one of those niggas that you were telling me about that? I was like, damn. Yeah, look, look, take, take a moment, take a moment, real quick, take a moment.
That just, that just bring back, cuz I've heard that word used in, uh, like a situation like that where it was like coming from a person of ignorance. Like, is that, you know, nigga, like, oh, my nigga, oh, I just listened to 50 Cent, man. I just heard it from just a place from ignorance. So you're totally right about this. Like, they need the exposure on both ends.
Because then like, you also have, you know, let's just say white people again, who just love black culture, you know? And being, and now watch this, now watch this cuz I've, I've seen this shit happen.
It just don't mean y'all get a pass, but let's listen to local real quick.
So like I seen white people who be around other white people be comfortable like, yo, that's my nigga right there, you know what I mean? And then they get around black people like, let dude like, yeah, what you doing? Oh, yeah, I'm chilling with my nigga such and such. You know, cuz.
Bro, it's so funny when I, listen, we love, we love everybody out here, right?
We do.
I, this is so funny when I see two white people saying the N-word amongst each other.
I think it's just funny when I see two non-black people in general talking, saying the N-word.
That shit is hilarious, bro. I just be like.
Cuz, I mean, think about it. You don't see two black people, like you don't see us going around like, yo, what's up my cracker? Yeah. Yo, what's up, what's up my wetback? What's up my this, my that? Like, you, you'll see that, you know? So it's, it's funny to me.
Yeah.
Because in that sense, like it just proved that, you know, the black culture is the most emulated culture.
Hey, I mean.
I, I dropped this mic, but this mic is more than what I make, so.
I mean, it's all facts. I mean, ain't no lies on this podcast.
Right. So, so bring that back in the schools like, without the segregation, I mean, what, like, I'm sorry, not without the seg, like, with integrated schools. It gives students a chance to be exposed and be around.
Yeah.
Those other cultures.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I'll, I'll tell you a funny story, true story. When I, when I was in college, uh, I had a, I had a friend in class, right? Uh, me and this dude went out to eat all the time.
Okay.
When we went, stayed at Jamba Juice.
Non-black, non-black person?
It was a white dude.
Okay, white guy.
So one time we hung out in the mall, right? And I ran into a whole bunch of his friends from high school.
Here we go.
And so, no, here goes a funny, here goes a funny shit, right? So my parents met this dude before too, and I never brought the story up. Sorry, mom and dad. So, um, so, yeah, well, we went to the mall, like I saw like four of his friends from high school. They were like, wait, that's, that's your friend?
That's.
Right.
I'm, we're not gonna say his real name on it, but that's local?
Yeah, that, that, that's, that's, he's your friend, you know what I mean? So I'm, I'm not thinking nothing of it, you know what I'm saying? I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm like, alright, I'm in a new state. I'm in a new area. I'm just, you know, I'm just gonna leave it alone. So then I found out that he knew one of my good friends.
Okay.
And so he had the same reaction. He was like, wait, what the fuck? You know? So I saw my other friend.
Yeah.
And I was like, yo, so why were you like so shocked that like me and this dude are cool? He was like, bro, he was super fucking racist in high school. I was this dude's first black friend.
Yeah, okay. This is real life, people. Like, I'm telling you, like.
I didn't, like, he, they said, cuz they were telling me like in high school, he was like.
Yeah.
I wanna kill all black people type shit. And.
So he was straight up like this.
I'm not gonna say that, but he was definitely.
Damn near. You wanna kill all black people shit?
I mean, damn near, but, but no, it just caught me by surprise cuz he just like, he had like this like extreme hatred for black people in high school and then.
Now local's the BFF.
Don't ever say that shit about another grown ass, man. Like, don't you ever say that shit about another grown ass. Where's the boo button?
My bad, yo.
Yo, I'mma find that button. Don't you ever say that shit about another grown man.
My bad, y'all, you know what I'm saying?
But no, it, it, it made me laugh like, and the sad thing is I wasn't even mad about it. I really, I really wasn't like, cuz then it's just like, alright, how can I go up to this person and just be like, bro, you never had a black friend? I can't be cool with you no more. You know what I mean? And I know some people take that to heart. Some people have a different opinion on it, but it's just like, alright, I just changed this dude's mind on having black friends.
Yeah.
So that, in that sense, that's why I said, I feel like, you know, integrating schools will be perfect, but if you're gonna integrate schools, then you need to, you, you have a demographical chart of who all is at your school.
Exactly.
Right? So then what you guys need to do is have appreciation times of the years for all those cultures. White, black, Hispanic, Middle Eastern, Chinese.
Facts.
African. What am I missing?
Actual appreciation.
Like actual appreciation, yeah, yeah, all that.
Like, don't just be given the history books to just have like black culture and all it is about slavery and shit. How about talk about, more about the accomplishments? And if y'all do, don't just put it on one fucking page in the history book. I, bro, I've seen that so many times in my history book. Oh, here's your history book, all European stuff. And then when it's black culture, it's like a whole page, mostly pictures, and then you turn the page, oh, now we're talking about European shit. I'm like, bro, are you fucking serious?
Exactly. And so with that being said, you know, when we talk about respecting all, you know, nationalities. respect our religions as well. You know, one of the things that we used to do back in my high school, I actually used to leave this back in the day, we did prayer at the flag. You know, um, the Muslim people, they had, they had their own little section where they would go and do their prayers throughout the day. Uh, we had the prayer at the flag, and honestly, I don't know what any other religion was doing in my high school. I'm not even gonna lie to you. So
They doing their thing over there.
But it's, it's crazy because they took that away.
One lady did that. Isn't that crazy? One lady had one complaint, took it to the Board of Education, and they swept it all, they swept it out.
And now, so let me ask you a very bold question. Do you think the moment they took prayers out of school, schools got worse?
I'm gonna say it definitely put a dent in the whole morality of schools because I'm, I'm not trying to push one, a religion on anybody else, but the prayer wasn't just about Jesus and Christianity. It was kind of like, let's just come together in peace and just get our minds right for the day.
It was a unity because the prayer of the flag, it wasn't, it wasn't just one nationality. It wasn't just, like, everybody was welcome to it. You know, they used to announce it on the intercom, like, hey, we'll be having prayer of the flag at eight o'clock. You know?
Yeah, the only thing was is just that whole prayer and then what is contained in the prayer, and then how each school is probably conducting said prayer, like, Jesus, Christianity, those words were heavily used when I did it in school. So it's like, you know, and even when they took prayers out of school, dude, they did still do it at my elementary school in the classroom, you know what I mean? So it's like, when you have that Jesus, Christian, those words, it's like, oh, they think, oh, you're forcing Christianity on my kids, like, you know what I mean? And that was actually part of the argument that the lady had when she brought it up. And I was like, one lady's gonna take that out, but
I mean, if, 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 if I'm gonna go there, can I go there with you?
Nitty gritty, bro, do it.
I always hated the saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I, like, I'm not gonna lie, I always thought, okay, no?
Okay, no, no.
Let's, okay, we, let's, let's, let's go there, cause I think it's gonna be like the first episode that you and I disagree on something, but
Oh, we did disagree on stuff before, but this one. Okay, so I think it's your country. I think you don't have to say it.
You did have to say it. Like, they sent you to the principal's office for not saying it.
Okay, well, they, me, they just made sure you just did this part. Cause some kids didn't wanna speak, or some kids actually didn't even know English in my school, so they were just like, just do this part. Or, uh, some kids actually did this, cause their, you know, parents had died in war or whatever, but
I mean, don't get me wrong, both of my parents were in the military and everything, and I, I thank them heavily for their service and what they did. I've just never been that patriotic for this country, like, okay.
That's why I read them history books, man.
Right, right, no, hold on, hold on, hear me out, hear me out, hear me out. And this, this is my, this is my, my reasoning for it back then.
All right, let's hear it.
Okay. You want me to pledge allegiance to a flag for a country that hates my black ass?
Okay, see.
That, that was, that was my reasoning for it at the time.
At the time, okay.
At the time.
Y'all, y'all here? Okay, we, we clarifying that. And I will agree with you till this day. This country did, was built from people that did hate us for our skin color. But at the same time, motherfucker, I have a saying, it's cause my people built most of this shit. So I'm gonna take this country, like, you know what I'm saying? All the shit y'all doing today, that's cause of my people. So when I say allegiance, I'm saying, yeah, I'm taking my part in this. You know what I'm saying? Now, do I think they could change? Well, they did change it. They took out under God. You know what I mean? That was the whole religious thing. But
You got, hold on, you got a quarter? You got a coin? Anybody got a coin? You got a coin over there? Wait, hold on, there, there, there's a dollar bill, that's saying on that dollar bill.
Yeah, does it say it on there?
No, cause you, you take one nation under God out of the Pledge of Allegiance, but on all the money, it says, in God we trust.
See what I'm saying? Well, that, is that, is that like a, is that praying off of like a older dollar bill or like a new one? That looks like a blue strip.
It is a blue shirt, but I don't know. It might, it, it, it would, it would have been on the back.
Yeah, we can get a back one. But yeah, you know, they took that out. And I'm just like, hmm.
Interesting.
Very interesting. It's very like, because even though this country does have a lot of negative connotations, you know, the red representing like the blood and all that stuff, white representing honor. I mean, I'm not gonna get into racial shit, but y'all, y'all know what I mean, right? And the blue representing liberty, it's like, this was built off of fucking people killing Native Americans, slavery, and all this other shit.
It was basically a massacre. You know what I mean?
It's funny because out of all that, it became a melting pot for freedom. And ironically enough, that's how a lot of successful nations are kind of built through a lot of bloodshed and, and pain and shit. So, you know, I mean, it's weird, but that's how it kind of is.
So it's, it's, it's funny. So earlier I was telling you about thirteen reasons why, right?
I'm gonna check that out, by the way. I'll, I'll get a Netflix account eventually.
Don't. So
Nevermind then.
So look, thirteen reasons why, it was a very deep show, right? A girl went through some hard times in high school, and she committed suicide. And honestly, my honest opinion about the show, I will say it to you off camera. All right?
All right, that's too nitty gritty segment.
That's too, that's, yeah, that's too nitty gritty for the camera. I'll, I'll say it off camera, but I'm not gonna focus on that part. I'm gonna focus on how they portrayed high school in that show, all right? So I'm not saying that, like, high school is just heaven for everybody, because it's not. Like, there are some people who skip school because it's just like, nah, this ain't it. Like, the student is bad. Right, cause I mean, like, they say, like, okay, the student is bad, teachers don't do shit, you know? Which, I'm not gonna lie, had the teacher did some shit, I wouldn't have got into a fight. Just saying, just saying. But, um, it's, it's crazy because, like, it just seems like in high school, and according to the show, it's like life trumped your responsibilities of getting your education. You know what I mean?
You said life trumped.
Getting your responsibilities of getting your education. So it's just like, you take your friend's drama and you skip classes for it.
But anything to get views on the Netflix, bro, that is not what it is.
I mean, that's not what the show is about. The show, the show is a whole different meaning outside of it.
Right, but the way they portray it like
The way they portraying it is just like, you know, students telling the teacher, yo, fuck you, my friend is crying, I gotta go, you know?
Okay, you go, I'm gonna fill your ass right now?
Right, cause I mean, I, I wa- look, I watched the show, and I, I, I put myself in their shoes, right? If I did one of those things that all those kids did, both my mothers and my father would beat the black off me, you know what I mean?
I gotta go, my friend's crying. Now you crying?
I'm crying, my boy. Listen.
Now you're both crying together.
Cause, cause like, I, I, I look at like how some of these schools are, you know? I look at the fact that students are just chauvinistic and base your likeness off little things that your parents can get for you. You know, um, had I moved here with my parents, I probably would have went to Plano West. Right? After seeing what kids are like in Plano West.
Well
Look at my face.
Yeah, I know. But to be honest, if, even if you did, because I feel that you're a very strong-willed person, I think you would have adjusted. You probably would have knocked some heads off. That's not gonna lie.
That's not a problem.
You know what I'm saying?
We're not gonna talk too much, my grandma gonna watch this.
They, they probably gonna see them Golden Gloves real quick.
No, grandma, I would have been nice and told the teacher.
But at the end of the day, I think you would have adjusted and it, it would, it would have been different for you.
I, I personally, I, I really feel like had I went to that school at that time, I'm not saying the Plano West is a bad school. It is not a bad school, it's a very prestigious school. My little, my little brother and my little cousin just, uh, graduated from there, actually. And and on top of that, like, it was funny, cause I was talking to my little brother about it, and he was like, yo, it's nothing like that. Like, nothing like it now. He said back then, when I was in high school, he's like, yeah, you would have went through that, but like, now it's just like, okay, so yes, it's, it's, it's different now. But at the time, like I said, God knew what he was doing when he let me graduate in twenty twenty, I mean, twenty ten, I almost said twenty. No neck, no neck.
No neck.
But
You, you wanna talk about, like, since things have changed over time, you wanna get into like the nitty gritty of the academics?
Oh, let's talk about it, because first off, if any of my teachers are watching this, I want y'all to know that ninety-five percent of the shit that you made me do, I do not do in real life.
And that is facts. Y'all already know, most of the stuff you learn in high school, the, okay, algebra, do you use algebra today? In any way, shape, or form? Okay, that's the answer. That's the answer, okay. I mean, come on, man, really, most of the stuff you learn, learning, okay, y'all lied to us about cursive. Did you, did you ever have to write in cursive in high school?
Um, yeah, we, they made us.
They really made y'all do that?
Yeah, deadass.
Okay, well, they prep, they prepped us in middle school, and then they're like, nothing but, eighth grade was nothing but cursive, we got to high school. It was like, all right.
Well, no, here's the thing though, cause I, I had like some moments, it wasn't like you can only write in cursive. It was like, I had some moments where the teacher was like, this paper needs to be written in cursive. And I'm like, you really have nothing to do with your life, do you?
I was like, damn, I forgot to do that.
Yeah, in mid- I'm not gonna lie, in middle school, they were just like, when you get to high school, I'm telling you, you're, you're gonna need to know this. And I'm like, I'm in high school and I'm not using it.
Yeah, I'm
You know.
Typing everything, you know?
Look, watch it, watch it. You ready for this? You ready for this?
What you got?
Dear math teachers, not once have I used y equals ms plus b in real life.
Pythagorean theorem is only, bro, is built in the calculator.
And then, and then on top of that, and then on top of that, like, this is my, this is one of my biggest issues with that, okay? Why have calculators that can do this shit for us and say we're not allowed to use it?
And you know what's ironic? When you're actually working as an engineer, you use the calculator.
They, they can't, bro, bro, you can't, you can't say that on here.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, yeah, yeah. I got friends who are engineers, and they literally have a calculator in their little briefcase, whatever. And it's like, looks just like the TI eighty-four.
Bro, and it's, like, it's not even just that, you know? Cause like, let me ask you this, what subjects were, did you like back in high school?
God, what subjects? Let's see. What very few subjects I like? I'm gonna count lunch as a subject, cause that took time out of my day. Recess, networking period. Hey, man. Hey, lunch is a subject to me. I learned a lot at lunch. But as far as real subjects, hey, Loco, real subjects, we gonna say mathematics. You know, mathematics was, was my, cause I took, uh, most of the AP classes, and I'll say, that actually kind of taught me a lot of things, like, I don't know, it feels like the AP classes were actually where they, they teach you real life shit. Math class, um, my band class, music class, and I'm gonna say my accounting class. I had an accounting class.
So I took economics, and, cause I, I love numbers. I'm, I'm a sucker for numbers. Economics was like probably one of the most beneficial classes I've ever had. Now, I can honestly say, of all my years of being in school, seventh grade, they did something for us in seventh grade, and I'm not even gonna lie to you. If it was up to me, this shit would be done every year.
What is that?
So they had this thing called Finance Park in Florida. Yes, that's right, Florida Education at Finance Park, where you at Texas? Let me stop playing because Texas shit's on Florida and education. Just saying, but
I was about to say, rewind.
So Finance Park was this thing where they, um, so they gave you jobs, right? On a piece of paper, and you had to dig through a jar and pick your job. It showed your income, the hours that you work, and that's it. So what they did was, you had to basically go through all these magazines and newspaper articles and like cars and all this other stuff, and live based off your income. So let's say your job was, I'm just gonna throw, I'm just throwing this out there, okay? Let's say your job was working at Walmart, you make nine dollars an hour and you work forty hours a week. You had to find an apartment and a car and groceries from these newspaper articles that fit your budget.
Ramen noodles, uh, box Chevy, here we come.
But I mean, at the time, things were cheaper. You know, and it, it's not like you can just say, oh, well, I'm finna get this, uh, I'm not finna say the year, cause I'm not finna age myself on this show. But I'm like, I'm not finna like pick this oh-five Mustang at the time, which is a hot shit, if you couldn't afford it. So they had good paying jobs, and then they had low paying jobs. And it wasn't like they gave you the jobs, you just selected it randomly. And then right.
That's a good one.
That's, that was, that was an amazing one.
I like the random, randomization. It just puts you in a scenario and just forces you to think.
And so basically, what you had to do is you had to make this poster. Like, okay, I work at it, let's say, I work at a bank. I make fifteen an hour. I found this apartment. Right? Apartment is X amount, X amount for rent. I can afford that. And then I have this car, my car notices this.
Right, right.
You know, they, they didn't go as deep as like adding insurance and shit.
And taxes and all that.
Well, I mean, we're in Florida, I don't know if they do insurance. I'm joking.
Florida looking a lot, really good right now, no insurance.
But, but yeah, you had to put it all on a poster, and it had to add up. And at the end of, at the end of it, you had to have your monthly savings at the bottom. And then at the end of it, they take you to this place called Finance Park, and it had, it looked like, it looked like a mall food court, but different companies. There was a Publix, there was a bank, no, there was a Publix, SunTrust Bank, Domino's, some restaurant. And some like, some kind of company. It was a, it was a good paying company, but you go there and you basically see what it's like to work. And we did that in seventh grade.
That's pretty good.
And, cause, and I, and I say that because honestly, a lot of these schools don't get you ready for life.
They, you know, they really don't. And I'm glad that that Finance Park, if any other school has that by a different name, keep that program.
Please do.
Fund that program, like, to the, to the max, because that is, I think it's good to get a glimpse of what reality is like. Like, you think you're just gonna, oh, my, my, whatever works at Domino's and he's doing good, is like, no, he's really not doing good. Look at Finance Park. His, at the end of the day, he don't got shit. You know what I mean? It's like, if you really want that Mustang, you might not wanna be working at Domino's if you want a Mustang and live comfortably.
And the, and the cool thing about it is, like, even with certain jobs, they had your ranking, like, okay, I'm a manager at Publix, or I'm just bagging groceries at Publix, you know? And it, it, it just, it just had like so much of a different variety. And honestly, once again, put the nitty gritty stamp on it. I feel like that should be a requirement before you graduate.
It should. And you know what's funny is that if people did get a choice to choose what they wanted to, I guarantee majority of people gonna choose doctor, lawyer, engineer.
But see, my thing is this, though, you ain't going to school to do that.
See, that's what they probably don't tell them is, what do you have to do to work to get that? Ten years of medical school, straight A's, all through high school and college. Engineer, straight A's, if you wanna get a good paying job, you know what I'm saying? So law school, you gotta do an apprenticeship. Couple of years, four years to get your BA. You know what I mean? They don't really talk about that part.
I got, I got a good question for you, bro.
What's that?
Do you think parents should have more of a say of what's in the school curriculum?
Uh, yeah, they do. It's your kids going to school. You know, and they have the Teachers', uh, Parent Teacher Association, you know what I'm saying? And, uh, I believe that those do have somewhat of an effect. Um, but I think they need to take those a lot more seriously, you know what I mean? Especially what we heard about old Texas mom. Was it, yeah, Alabama or Texas mom, right? Yeah, that shouldn't be in the books. Come on, that book's not that damn important. Take the book out. They shouldn't be reading that in public in school. So if she, if you didn't have moments like that, parents actually expressing their needs and wants for the schools, you wouldn't find small adjustments like that. I guarantee that book is not at that school anymore.
So, you know what, actually, before I say what I was about to say, I gotta, I gotta shout out to my mother back in Florida for this, cause we talked on the phone, and I told her about the topic. And, um, she made a very valuable point. She's like, a lot of parents send their kids to school expecting the teachers to raise their kids. And the teachers send the kids back home expecting the parents to teach them. What are your thoughts on that?
The parents to teach them what?
So they send you a homework. Right? Which personally, I think homework is fucking retarded.
Uh, I, I disagree with that.
I'm gonna tell you why. So if you're not actually getting it, who do you go to for help?
Uh, your notes you took in class.
Sometimes that doesn't work for people. You gotta, you gotta understand. There's three different types of learners. Kinesthetic, auditory, and, um, visual.
So what, this, this is where, now, you don't take notes until you're in high school, and in high school, that's when I don't think, I didn't start taking notes in class till high school. Like, we, we didn't have like homework where we needed to take like notes until like high school, you know what I mean?
It was me in middle school, like, what the hell?
I don't know, none of my classes, we didn't have to take like notes. They gave us packets that already had pre-written notes in them, you know what I mean? But it's like in high school, yeah, they didn't give you shit, you know what I mean? But I think homework, yeah, there's different types of learning, but at the same time, this is when, I'm gonna be honest, this is when you kind of see which kid's gonna speak out or not. If a kid's not getting it, he needs to speak up.
Yes, but even if he speaks up, he's, let's say he didn't do his homework, cause he didn't get it, and he speaks up about it. More times than not, the teacher's gonna be like, well, you didn't do your homework. That's all they're seeing. Now, it is not like kids have access to teachers outside of school. And it's also, and at the same time, I think it's unfair to expect your parents to know what you're being taught.
It's unfair to expect, that's why you gotta communicate with them. You know what I mean?
Communicate with your parents or communicate with the teacher?
Both. They need to know what subject you're doing, what subject it's about, and the teachers need to know, do you fricking like get this or not?
I mean, okay.
And if, if both sides know, and nothing is still being done, that teacher needs to be put fired foot to the fire.
Okay, so let me ask you this, let me ask you this. A kid goes to school. Teacher teaches the kid. The kid fails a class. Whose fault is it? The teacher for not teaching or the student for not getting it?
Uh, this is when communication comes in. You have to analyze, what was he doing in class? Was he doing his homework? Was he paying attention in class?
Let's say he did all that and just didn't get it.
Was paying attention and asking questions and everything.
Right, cause I'll be honest with you, I had a class like that. First, one of my first classes I took in college, Anthro mother, Impology. And I genuinely did not get shit in that class. That was probably the lowest grade.
Is that the study of like, uh, civilizations and stuff like that, right?
Yeah, and the way, yeah, and the way the teacher taught it, I've asked questions, I met with the teacher, all this other stuff, I did not get it.
Yeah, see, the thing about, so college, right? And this is where I kind of branched, branched off into something else. In high school, I think they're obligated to prepare you and put their all into you regardless, you know what I mean? This is taxpayer dollars. In college, it's kind of a business. So it's like, I expect teachers, and this, this may sound kind of fucked up, but I, I I've seen a lot of teachers just not give a damn in college, cause it's, they're like, oh, you know, it's just, it is what it is, deal with it. But in high school, they need to have those parent teachers come in, and if you weren't getting it, they need to sit down, and they need to just make sure you get it before you leave, before you graduate, before that semester ends. You know what I mean? In colleges, it should be the same way, but you know in college, they, you know what they say? Oh, just take it again, like bullshit like that. Or they'll tell you to pay for tutoring.
I'm, I'm gonna tell you why I disagree in a sense. Cause I really feel like a lot of high school teachers don't give a damn.
Yeah, and this is why I said, they need to put foot to fire, and they should be fired, bro.
When I was in high school, my guidance counselor took me and like three other students to tour three different colleges on their own dime.
Oh, wow, that's pretty good.
And I'm just like, I'm thinking to myself, like, okay, you got a, a school full of teachers who are taught to teach you. And I'm just like, I'm thinking to myself like, okay, you got a, a school full of teachers who are taught to teach you. And these, these two guidance counselors took their own money to drive us from Tampa to Tallahassee and Gainesville. To tour three schools. And to teach us about the application process for college that we just didn't know. You know, and uh, so uh.
You choke on the water or something?
Nah, I was, I was trying to close it and it just, hey John, let me, let me get that napkin, bro. John, let me get that, let me get that right there. Just toss it.
We got trust up napkins too, y'all coming soon. Trust up the brand, make sure y'all quench your thirst.
Dang it, I missed. I mean, I made it. I made it. But, but no, it's, I, I, I personally think a lot of these high school teachers, like, don't give a damn. And.
I agree with you.
And honestly. I think.
You're totally right. And it, it really kinda pisses me off that that, that's just what it is, that these teachers just do not give a fuck, man. There is a dude, his name is, um, I don't know his first name, but his last name is Bliss. And you probably seen the video, white dude with long hair. And he was getting kicked out of a classroom because he was speaking out. This lady was giving them homework and like you said, the kid didn't get it. The kid was like, I don't get it, I don't get it. She's like, oh, well here, turn in. He's like, I don't get it, like, what is this? And she wasn't even getting up out of her seat to go over there and help him. She was just like, that, that's what it is. And this kid named, your last name is Bliss, I saw on the Facebook video. But he got up and he's like, listen, you gotta reach the kid's heart. School is about educating the, the future. This is the future. It's like, when you're dead and gone, these kids are gonna be the ones running the country. So you need to, you know, get up off your ass and actually help these kids out. It's not about the grades, it's about reaching the kid's heart and make sure he understands it. Whether you speak to him, write it to him, or show him. And I was like, boy, you need to be hired up in there. You need to be a counselor.
The sad thing is, how much you wanna bet he got suspended?
He did. But you know what? That message, you know what's, and the other ironic part is, people probably learn more from him that two-minute rant than they did that whole semester in that lady's class. That's crazy.
That's, that's not just crazy, that's disgusting.
Yeah. That two minutes that, that your peer was talking, you probably learned more from that moment than you did.
I just thought about something. I know, I know we didn't, I know we didn't write this down on our notes, but I just thought about this, alright? Do you think the teachers don't care, cause they get paid like shit?
Uh, that's definitely a big reason. I'm just being honest, that's definitely huge. Teachers should get paid more.
They, they really, they really should. You know, I, you know what I just found out recently?
What's that?
Most teacher assistants are only making like eleven hundred dollars a month.
So eleven hundred, what would that equate yearly? Or annually, I'm sorry.
Annually?
Eleven hundred a month, so you're making not even McDonald's wages.
Hold on.
TAs.
Sorry, thirteen thousand two hundred.
So this, this is a TA. So an actual school teacher, let's say for high school, an average, how much they make, like forty K?
I would, nah, I think less than that, cause they, wait, hold on, no, 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 don't hold on. Cause you, you remember the movie Notorious? Remember Notorious, where he put him on blast, yeah, he put him on blast about how much he makes? Cause he said you'll end up being a garbage man. And he's like, a garbage man makes this much, a teacher makes this much. I'll be making like four hundred dollars more than no dumbass teacher right here.
What'd he say?
I think he said like, cause at the time, I think it was like twenty-three, twenty-four hundred dollars.
He was, this is back in the nineties when he was saying this shit.
Yeah, nah, it would've been like eighties, nine, yeah, eighties, nineties. That biggie would've said. A month. Cause you know teachers get paid monthly. They get paid once a month.
Twenty-three hundred a month.
Back then. And then now, if I had to, if I had to take a guess now, I actually.
And that, and he was in New York, bro.
Yeah, New York ain't cheap.
Golly. If y'all are watching this, man. Just know, we are advocates. Teacher needs to get paid a lot more. We need, because when you have a higher budget for higher, whatever, you're gonna bring in better teachers. Not saying that teachers that aren't getting paid a lot aren't better, but you just have a lot more people that are gonna, you know, you bring in more requirements, higher salary, you're gonna have a better, I think, you know, better teachers.
Are you ready for this?
What's that?
The top earning teacher makes three thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars a month.
Now, this is grade school teachers.
Yeah. Um, the seventy-fifth percentile is making two thousand nine hundred and sixteen. The average is twenty-five eighty-three. And the twenty-fifth percentile is making seventeen hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's a little too low for teachers. But the only good thing out of all that is they get a whole summer off. And I'm like, come on, bro, y'all get two months vacation. I'm like.
I mean, yeah, they get a two-month paid vacation, but still. But still, like, it kinda makes sense. Okay, think about it, think about it, think about it, right? Ready? So, you get rappers and athletes who get paid millions to entertain. And then you get teachers who get paid dick. To teach.
Where they go, what a kinds, I, what a kind way say, I paid a visit to the institute, they got the crackheads keeping kids in the school. I mean. It's just like, you, you know, it's, it's really sad, bro. It's, it's really sad because at the end of the day, money's gonna make things go around. You need money to buy food, to do rent, to do all that stuff. So if you're always being flashed at being this, being an athlete or entertainer or whatever, actor is gonna get you the most money and being a teacher, uh, you don't make a lot of money, but it's good for society. I mean, come on, man, kids, they're gonna wanna follow their dreams first. Then they fall back on being a teacher and being a whatever. And it's honestly really sad, bro. It's like, we, we, this, things need to change.
And, you know, let's, let's, let's get on the last important one. Cause I wonder, we only got a few minutes left.
Yeah, uh, what was it, college?
School shootings.
Oh yeah, school shootings. Uh, what was the biggest one? The Chicago one, um, what was that Chicago school shooting when those white boys came in?
That was Columbine.
Columbine. Was that school in Chicago?
That was in the west, bro. Like Columbine was in.
Am I, am I just totally thinking of something else? Maybe because Chi-town is so hot right now, I just keep thinking about that. School shootings in Chi-town too, but.
Columbine.
Was it in Illinois?
Colorado.
It was in Colorado, okay, yeah. That's crazy. Didn't we just recently have one here in Dallas?
Had one yesterday in Arlington. It started off as a fight. Dude pulled a gun and four people got shot.
But, why, why? What was the situation behind it? What was the scenario behind it? He pulled a gun, why? It was a black kid, right?
Yo, black dude. They, they caught him walking around in Grand Prairie. So, let's, 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 let's think about this, okay? Cause I know, I lo, I know a lot of these, you know, some of these people who watch this are conspiracy theorists and they don't believe in most of the school shootings, like, some people.
Keep your tin hats on.
They, some, some of the people don't believe in the Sandy Hook, some people don't believe in the, in the one that happened in Florida. With the, uh, did you hear, did you hear about the, uh, David something? They said he was a crisis actor?
Something about that. I know his name was David, but I heard about crisis.
It was David something. And they, they said that it was like a crisis actor. Because, cause like, okay.
Boy, this is crazy.
This is real crazy. Yeah. This kid survived, ah, hold on, I'm about to look up his name right now, hold on. We finna, we finna go over time on this one.
This is some news to me. This is scary ass news. You talking about people that are paid to be on the news, to fabricate a story about some killings and shit, some school shootings.
Uh, let's see, let's see, let's see, crisis actor. I'm, I'm seeing this picture, I'm trying to pull up his name. David Hogg, David Hogg. And they saying that he's a crisis actor.
Let me see what he looked like.
They were saying that he's a crisis actor because of, uh, yeah. Because he was in a situation in California and then he was a survivor of the school shooting. Um, but that's beside the point. It's kinda sad that it's, it's to, it's to a point right now where a lot of schools don't even allow you to have backpacks.
Okay, so what do they have?
So, some schools.
Books or something like that?
Some schools, they make you carry like, what looks like a laundry basket to school. My mother was telling me that, my mother was telling me that some, some schools in Florida, they search you as soon as you get off the bus. You know.
Yeah, they did some schools in Dallas too. Metal detectors and everything.
Yeah, and then some schools, they just, um, like, you don't bring anything, cause everything you need is provided in class.
Oh wow, getting to that point.
Yeah, so.
Alright.
So, he, here's a, here's a powerful question. Let's, cause I don't wanna get too much into the school shooting. I, I thought about it and I was just like, nah, could we?
My, my, my whole thing on that is real quick, is just, thi, this may sound real fucked up, but they were keeping it nitty gritty. Just before you leave the house, and I know a lot of people may not be, be religious, but just make sure you just get your head straight and, and say whatever you think is to your mommy, daddy, parents. Cause you never know, tomorrow's not ever promised.
And honestly, I'mma piggyback on that one. This is another reason why we strongly, we with the Nitty Gritty Podcast, strongly believe in wellness checks. You know, I, I ain't gonna lie, like, I was, I was the type of person back in high school, like, if I saw somebody sitting by themselves. Like especially on game days, like when we had to wear jerseys and shit. I would always go sit with that person. You know?
So you be the athlete with the jersey on, sit next to the dork that's just regular person?
I mean, this motherfucker sitting by themselves, like.
See, that's, you know, I'm glad that you did that, because when you're a football player, you wear the jersey, you're looked at as like, almost like a celebrity. You know, you're on the football team and you're sitting next to me, oh man, I bet him, made that, him or her feel really good.
Uh, I don't know, cause like at first, he honestly probably thought that, um, that I like lost a bet and just had to sit with him. You know?
Well, you tried.
I mean.
Try as long as you try, man.
Yeah, as long as, like, it, it, it ain't, it ain't hard, you know? The signs are always there. And sometimes the signs aren't there. You know? Because it's a sad day when to some people, school is heaven, some people's school is hell. Some people dread going to school, some people dread leaving school. You know? Now, let, let's, let's end it with this question, alright? You look at everything that's going on with schools. You look at how schools are getting fucked up now. If you had a place to blame on somebody, teacher, student, parent.
It goes all around. Cause it's gonna be like, bro, you got parents that are shitty and the kids see that. And they're like, I'mma go to school and get away from these motherfuckers. So I'mma make straight A's. And you got parents that are shitty, kids got potential. Kids fucking up, cause they shitty ass parents. And you got teachers who just don't give a fuck. And the parent is like, what the fuck, why is my kid making so many bad grades? Oh, cause the teacher is not even doing his thing right. And it's like, I don't know, this is why I go back to the point of communication. Everybody has to speak up. It's gotta start with the kid first. And unfortunately, I know it's a child, but the kid has to speak up first and be like, there's a problem. And if you're the parent and you see a low grade, speak up. Even if it's a B in class, speak up. Like, how come we couldn't get that A? You know what I'm saying? Speak up. He made an eighty-five, what's, you know, just curious, what's up?
So.
You know what I mean?
If I had to say a final stamp on that one, strongly emphasize, parents with kids, be involved.
Yeah.
Period.
Communicate, please.
Involved, period. You know, we had a thing growing up where the, our parents could see our grade books. Like, to the T.
And they should.
You know, as they should. You know, like, I, I hated it, but it was a blessing in disguise, you know? Teachers, honestly, if the kid is in your class, you are officially involved in that kid's life. And you're responsible for that subject and that moment. That you're with that kid. And kids, we said this before, on the mental health episode. Y'all act like adults haven't been in your shoes. Y'all act like, you know, we just don't know what y'all talking about, like, we don't see y'all, like, we don't hear y'all.
Been there, done that, they've all done that.
Right. And so, honestly, if parents got more involved, your teachers gave more of a fuck. And if students stopped showing their ass. Like, school would be amazing.
Yeah. So, in the order, what would you think? I think it has to be parent, teacher, student. Cause the parent sees the problem in the student, the teacher reacts, puts fire into the student.
I'm about to disagree with you on that one. Parent and the teacher are the adults in the situation, period. And the teacher are the adults in the situation.
First ones to make.
They're gonna be the first, I gotta put them at the first two. And then it's the student.
Right. Yeah, that's why I said, like, the parent.
Oh, I thought, I thought you were like, okay, okay, so.
It starts with the parent, though. You notice the problem in your kid, you go directly to the teacher, be like, what the fuck is going on?
But at the same time, you know, students hide shit from their parents.
Yeah, well, they can't hide, I mean, yeah, they hide shit, but this is where you tell the teacher, I know you don't send them report cards out, every grade you send out, fucking text me, email me, put me on the email list.
No, watch this, watch this.
You know what I mean?
I'm about to make all of my parents laugh when I say this.
What's that?
Parents, you know what y'all need to do? And this is what my parents did with me. Weekly backpack checks.
Oh yeah, with the flashlight.
Nah, they, they.
Oh, they dump it.
You gotta remember, both my parents are cops. You know, so like, it wasn't, it wasn't no, like, I don't know why my dumbass tried to hide shit, but like, I, I tried to and they found his shit. But, but no, like, seriously. Backpack checks, you know? Randomly call the school, see what's, see what's going on. Cause like, these people got your kids for like, what, six hours of the day?
You know, do sports, they got for another two or three, so.
But anyway, y'all, we over time right now. Nitty gritty podcast.
Hack loaded episode, I like this one.
This, this is a, this is a.
This is filled with a lot of stuff and hopefully y'all take a lot from this, man.
You know what, you know what, I'm, I'm gonna do a little spoiler, can I do a little spoiler?
What's the spoiler?
Let's do a part two of this next season.
Alright, part two coming up. We give y'all a little bit, just a little taste.
Just a little, just a little taste, but we, we're definitely, we're definitely gonna make sure that this is a part two, because like, I'm looking at everything we wrote down, we ain't even get to have it.
It's a lot to it, man. It's, it's a very, it's just something that, there's always a problem with it, you know, with the school system and we, will we ever come to a consensus where it's like, this is what it is and this is how we're gonna fix it? No, cause there's always stuff changing, but we need to get to a point where the school system is at least at a level where it's, it, it's good all around. You know what I'm saying? It's just, there's, there just seems like there's so many holes in it right now. It's just ridiculous, man.
Exactly. So, with that being said, Nitty Gritty signing off.
Yes, sir.
DJ Cannon, Loco.
We out, man.
We out. We love y'all. Like and subscribe, hit us up.
Backing in my comfortable places, we only hustle for greatness. Franklin and Ulysses faces, I'm taking it to new places. Call this divine immigration, more like divine intervention. You like the vibe, but can't chase it, I know.